Excellent.
Perfect, I can get the last motion then off the recording. The adjourning motion.
Yes, you can.
Okay. Looking to see, I think we've got most of our members back.
And we have a new student rep tonight.
Yes, I saw that.
We do, with a very familiar last name.
I know.
Starting a dynasty.
So just let me know when you'd like me to put the PowerPoint up Chairman Vasella.
We will, I said, I said to give our members about 10 minutes, so give it another, another two minutes maybe and then we can, we'll, we'll, we'll begin our meeting.
It looks like we're still missing quite a few board members, actually.
Think we're Miss Dan is here.
I think it's just Bob and Emily.
Oh, okay.
I'll send them each another invite just to give them that extra.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we get our meeting underway?
Very good, let me get the PowerPoint ready to go here. And look at that, we're already done.
Okay. Let's begin. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education for October 13th, 2021. It is 7:12 PM. If you would please stand for the pledge as you are able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Ms. Craig, if you would take the roll call for us, please?
Michael Branda.
Here.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Here.
Emily Guyan. Beth Manke-Hut Wagner.
Here.
Steven Sylvia.
Present.
Cindy Stan.
Here.
Robert Toffelt. Pa Vasella.
Present.
Jessica Weaver.
Here.
I have everyone here except Mrs. Guyan and Mr. Toffelt.
Very good, thank you. Okay, our first item on the agenda tonight is a presentation of an award, and we have a proclamation tonight, which honors our school bus drivers. And I noticed we had some bus drivers in our audience tonight, and so I'm happy for that. I'd like to read the resolution for our bus drivers. Resolution honoring the Newington School Bus Drivers, October 13th, 2021. Whereas Wednesday, October 13th, 2021, has been proclaimed as Newington School Bus Drivers Day. And whereas the Newington School Bus Drivers have shown dedication and conscientious performance when driving students to and from school and to specific activities. And whereas the Newington School Bus Drivers have outstanding driving safety records. And whereas the Newington School Bus Drivers maintain a close working relationship with the school staff and parents. And whereas the Newington School Bus Drivers actively participate in the community affairs and a show of willingness to go above and beyond the workday. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 13th, 2021, as Newington School Bus Driver Day. Be resolved that we urge all the citizens of our community to join with us in actively expressing our gratitude to the Newington School Bus Drivers on this very special day. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Newington Board of Education is directed to spread this resolution upon the minutes of this meeting and to provide a suitable copy for presentation. And it's signed by myself as chairperson and the members of the Board of Education. So again, I congratulate the bus drivers. I know Dean was here and Erin were, were present. I know that they have their other bus drivers here also. I know, I guess what I'll do is I'll ask the board members if they would like to come in first, and then I'll give Dean and Erin a chance to, and some of the bus drivers have a chance to, to speak after the board members have that opportunity. So any board members which wish to speak, if you would raise your hand, Ms. Manke-Hutbanger.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to say such a heartfelt thank you to all of our school bus drivers. You are the face that our students start the day with, and they are the face that they see at the end of the day. I still remember my school bus driver when I was in kindergarten, Mrs. Sylvia Malloy. And she, though I only took the bus in kindergarten, she touched my life truly, and I still see her often and wish her well. Bus drivers touch the lives of all of these kids in town. We are so incredibly lucky to have you. You are like another set of eyes. You're like another parent, and I know you're, you're always watching out for our kids and we thank you for the wonderful, wonderful humans that you are.
Thank you. Ms. Guyan.
I'm not sure that I could say anything better than what Beth just stated. I agree with her 100%. You are the first and last faces that they see from, our students see from school every day, and I know that the impact that you have on their lives is, is so important, and I just appreciate tremendously the pride that you take in the work that you do and the way that you treat our students and the way that you are a huge part of our community, and I, I am grateful every time that I'm, I see one of our buses drive by, I feel good. I know that there's several bus drivers that I know in town, and when I can, I try to wave and get them to wave back at me, but because I get excited when I see them, because I know that the, whether it's been on a field trip or Nancy, that was my, or Mr. Charles, those are bus drivers that my kids have that I, I always think of fondly, and, and it just is, you know, names that I'll remember forever because you are good to my kids, and so that's something I think that is a treasure that we have here in Newington and our bus drivers. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Ms. Dan.
Definitely, I can't say much more than Beth and Emily, but you guys are the greatest, and like, just as a side note, and I'm sorry, my dog is being a joke right now. But I was just on my front porch the other day. I'm on my front porch with my dog every day. Morning and afternoon, morning and afternoon, and it was one of those yucky days. And I'm like, the bus is coming down, it stopped and came down my street, and I'm going, that's not the normal route. But then I realized, because he goes by, and it was a rainy crappy day, he let one of the older kids off right at her house, that she normally just goes to the bus stop, but he was, that's his route to go by there, so or he or she, I don't even know. I was like, oh, that was so nice. So little silly things like that, but it's like, they really think about stuff like that, like, it was a really crappy day. And I was just like, oh, that was really kind of cool, you know, kind of just those little things. And, you know, definitely the importance of the first and last and that kind of thing. And, and I do a little consulting, and I just had a story the other day where there, it's a company that we, you know, we don't engage in companies here, but like, that child, a child was greeted very poorly by a, a bus driver from a company, and I'm like, I know that doesn't happen here, and that, that poor child had a horrible day the rest of the day. And I know that doesn't happen here, and I'm so grateful that we, we have the quality people we have on our buses and do the great job that they do. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Dan. Ms. Weaver.
All right, they're taking all of what I'm gonna say, but the love fest shall continue because it is so worth it. Our bus drivers, thank you so much. Thank you for coming on and letting us shower you with love like you deserve every day because we say this about every part, and I think over the past 18 months, we've really gotten to highlight just how every single individual in our school is such a critical part of the machine to make our schools work. And it's so important to highlight the non-academic parts of it, that really are those face-to-face interactions with our students. That goes such a long way, sometimes even more than an algebra problem that day. So I think it's so important that we not only thank you, but recognize you every day, and we are so appreciative. Even if we're not taking the bus every day, or students are, I took the bus, but I was a walker. And I will say the buses were the nicest, stopping at the crosswalk every time. Thank you. And this will be a PSA announcement, please, please don't, please stop when the bus stops, please. They are ensuring our children are safe, and please respect them making sure our, our children are safe. We so appreciate it. There is nothing more important than making sure not only we give them a good education, but they are there for the education safely there and to home. It is just the most critical, critical function we have. Thank you to Dean and Erin too for always running this. You know, it's just something we're, we're known for in Newington. I know buses get, get a lot of the pizzazz here and a lot of the talk. But they're the reason you're the talk of the town. So thank you so much, and we are so happy to, to honor you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Mr. Branda.
Thanks, Paul. This is usually one of my favorite meetings because Dean, you usually wear a bus tie, and I noticed there's no bus tie. So I'm gonna let it slide this time. Looks like it was polo day, and that's cool, too. I, you know, just speaking to what Jessica just talked about, I think, Dean, your dedication to your career that you incorporated into your wardrobe always just impresses me. So maybe next time, if you can remember the bus tie. I think we say it every year, but it's just important to remind everybody that the bus drivers are the first people that our kids see and the last ones that they see at the end of their school day, and you do a lot to help ensure that their day is going to start on the right foot. And if it didn't end on the right foot, it does when you, you know, oh, nice, I see it now. I like it. I like it, Paul. Wait, do you have a tie? Did Dean give you a tie? Wait, did Dean give you a tie, or do you have that tie?
After all the bus duty that I've done in my life, I have my own bus tie.
Okay, I have life goals now of getting a bus tie. Thank you. So I was just gonna say, you know, they ensure that the school day starts off on a great way. It ends hopefully in an even better way. You can see the smile even through the mask, and I just appreciate everything that our bus drivers do, how they're there for our students every day. Through all the weather, through all of the challenges, the sports, the late pickups, all the things, they're just amazing. Dean, you and Erin are amazing, and I just can't say enough about you, even though you're not wearing the tie, but it's all good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Branda. Dr. Brummett, do you wish to chime in now, or you want to come in a little later?
I will chime in now. Absolutely. Thanks to Dean and Erin for running a high-quality operation. My first foray into buses that are part of the school district, and it's been absolutely a distinct pleasure, and it has been an immense asset to the district. As for our drivers, in spite of all the fanfare that we heard in publicity-wise before school started, our bus drivers rose to the occasion. They have cooperated with all of our protocols, all the mandates and executive orders that have been, you know, put on folks this year. And they continue to take immense pride in their work, and rightly so, because they do a fantastic job, and the kids absolutely love them. We're always getting little notes about how wonderful their bus drivers are. So a heartfelt thanks for your professionalism and how well you treat our children day in and day out.
Thank you, Dr. Brummett. And just for my thank you to, to the drivers and to our administrative team that's at the bus garage. I did have a chance to be with Allen Avery last week at an event, and he sends his best and wishes all of you the best also. So there's a little blast from the past for you, too. Mr. Barnes, if you would like to have a few words, we'd love to hear from you.
Well, thank you. Mr. Brenda, I will definitely take care of that situation for you. I have a few extras, maybe I'll gift one to you. So you can wear one. Make your day. I do appreciate all of the wonderful support from the Board of Education here in Newington and going on over just over three years in the position that I hold for the district. It's been a wonderful journey. And through all of the struggles as we have all had to face with COVID, as to the superintendent's comments, it is true, the drivers of this district have really stepped up. They've always been very supportive when we were helping with the meal plan, when we were helping serve food, when we were delivering food, when we had students that needed things brought to their homes. Our drivers were, when we got the call, our drivers stepped up, saddled up, and headed out in their bus to take care of that. So I am appreciative of my staff and the team that I work with, and I let them know all the time, it's a team effort. It's not myself that sits here or Erin that sits in the office and behind the scenes. It's what they do, because we are not the face of the operation. It is the drivers are the face of the operation, that your children see, your grandchildren, your neighbors, the students of our district. And as you've all heard, the immense amount of issues that are going on throughout the school bus industry, not only here in the state of Connecticut, but throughout the United States, when you have to call a National Guard in to drive your buses in your towns like they are in Massachusetts. We don't have that issue here in, in Newington, and it's because of the great support that we have and the amount, and the drivers and their commitment to the district. Again, one of the things that I always refer to during this meeting is we have drivers so dedicated that they come and ask for their bus routes early so that they can go out and meet their kindergarten students personally. They go knocking on their door, introducing themselves so that when little Johnny or Suzie gets on the bus that first day, they're not like, oh, who's this man or who's this woman? They're already introduced, so it makes their day that much more pleasant, so in the beginning of their school day. So on behalf of our operation, we want to thank you for your support that you continue to give to the district's school bus operation. We are one of five school districts that still operate our own school buses, and we should be proud of that as a community and as a board and as a school district, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Dean. Erin, did you wish to make a comment?
Sure, I just wanted to say a quick thank you to all of the wonderful staff I've worked with in Newington over the last 12 years, and thank the Board of Ed for their continued support of our department. I think our drivers, you know, probably 50 or 60% of them actually live in town, so they're really invested in, you know, providing excellent quality service. I always say I'm the mom of 4,000 kids every afternoon, and it's Dean and our jobs and the drivers' jobs to make sure they end up in the right places and that they have a good ride home and a good ride to school. So again, thank you guys for all your support.
Thank you, Erin. Any bus drivers on, would you, that would like to speak, if you raise your hand, I'll give you a chance to speak. Don't see any, but again, another thank you for everything that you do for all of our kids and our families here in town, and we all appreciate it so very much. So thank you again. Okay, Dr. Brummett, it is time for our everyday hero, and I will let you take the lead.
Thank you so much. I'm thrilled to announce the first everyday hero of the 2021-2022 school year is Beth Lucas from John Patterson School. She was nominated by Jesse Dalton from John Patterson School, who's also with us tonight. And Mr. Gatos has joined us tonight as well. Here's what Jesse wrote. Beth is an incredible colleague, educator, and friend. This is Beth's final year teaching before retirement, and she has not slowed down one bit. This year, Beth has a student who recently immigrated to Newington from Turkey. Beth connected with the student immediately and noticed that the student thirsted for knowledge and was desperate to learn English to access the curriculum. Beth reached out to our whole building together, early reading materials to help this student learn to read English. She also researched translation devices and purchased a handheld device to be able to communicate with the student more efficiently. Recently, Beth asked me to help pull books about multi-language learners for her class, bookpots to help the other students in her room understand how hard it is to learn a new language and adjust to a new culture. This student entered Beth's classroom anxious and scared of the future and is now thriving and making gains. Beth's ability to meet the individualized learning needs of this child as well as all of her other students is incredibly inspiring, and I am honored to call her my colleague and friend. And if I might add anecdotally, before I turn it back over to Chairman Vasella, I happened to be at John Patterson during our first rounds visit of the year and happened to see Ms. Lucas interact with this student, and I was blown away by the device that she researched and found and how well it was going for this young student. And just thrilled that in our strive for equity throughout this school year, all of the components that Ms. Lucas took to her own and put forward with her class about understanding the needs of the child and meeting the needs of this child right where she was at, and now she's growing and thriving as, as was stated by Ms. Dalton. So I couldn't be more excited to honor Ms. Lucas as our first everyday hero of this school year. Chairman Vasella.
Thank you, Dr. Brummett.
And virtual clapping.
Virtually clapping. Mr. Gatos, I don't know if you'd like to have a few words and kick us off?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you so much for having me on, and congratulations, Beth. You may or may not know, Dr. Brummett gave me the privilege of sharing with Beth that she was the first everyday hero, and her exact words to me were, well, so much for laying low in my last year. But could not be more proud of Beth and the, the commitment that she brings to her kids every day. You know, as great as this device is, that's just one small example of what she does for kids every day from the moment I met her as an educator. One example was, one start of the school year, her room was decked out in NASCAR, and she was decked out in NASCAR gear heading into the first day of school. I'm like, hmm, Mrs. Lucas, not really the outfit I would have picked for the first day of school. But she shared with me, and I got to learn through her kids that that summer, she reached out to every kid and family to try to find out what their interests were, and there were some kids in that room that we really needed to touch. And she found a common thread of NASCAR, and that's how she weaved the entire year in of learning. And so that, that's just what Beth does. She goes above and beyond every single day for her kids. She doesn't want you to know about it, and she just does her thing and does some great things for our kids. So great job, Mrs. Lucas, well done.
Thank you, Ms. Gatos. Ms. Dalton, would you like to have a word?
Sure, I'll jump in. So this is now my eighth year at Patterson, and Beth, on my very first day working in a new district, she sat down next to me, and she was like, hey, how's it going? She was one of the first people in our building to, to talk to me and to make me feel welcomed, and so she has that, that ability, not just with, you know, adults, but with kids, and Beth makes learning fun. I always like to like, just kind of pop into her classroom because she's got such an upbeat attitude and recognizes that for some students, learning is scary, and if she can make it fun and exciting, then she's gonna hook those kids in. And, and she does that, like Mike said, when she did NASCAR, she's actually done, she's changed her room theme for, to connect with the different students, like she did, I remember when you did the jungle theme for a student one year to keep him, to get him excited and help him feel safe in your room. You know, there was a few years ago, she, she's one of our student council our teachers, and she, actually the year 2019 before we went out, like, she had cheerleaders out in the hallways, getting kids excited to come to school every day, because she recognized that for some students, like, it's scary to enter, enter schools, and she's worked really hard to keep it exciting and fun, and she still does that. And I am honored to, to work with her. Thanks, Beth.
Thank you so much. Members of the board, if you raise hands, and I'll get you, Dr. Fletcher?
Yeah, I'm very impressed because part of my philosophy of education is that with most kids, before you can connect with their minds, you gotta connect with their heart. And she is a great example of that. That student is going to flourish, and it's gonna be because of what she has done at that beginning level. So I want to say thank you for what you did. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. Ms. Weaver.
I love this part. I'm just watching you, Beth, on screen, and you're getting emotional, and that's making me emotional because I know how much work you put into this, and hearing all of the stories just from the last five minutes, it's really incredible. Just, we always say, you know, our teachers go above and beyond, our teachers go above and beyond, but hearing those stories, it just shows you how much you go above and beyond and how much, it's so important for us to highlight that. And I am very sad to hear this is your last year because I know how many kids have benefited from your teaching, and watching you, I know you put blood, sweat, and tears in, and I know those are happy tears now, but I know you put a lot into it. So please know, we are so grateful as a district to have had you, and for this last year, we hope we can, we can, you can touch so many students and know that we on the board are just so appreciative. Everyday hero is, is the reason we name this award, because every day you show up for every student, and we're so grateful for that. So thank you for your service, and, and thank you for, for touching so many students like that.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Ms. Guyan.
A lot of what she just said. Just thinking about what, man, over, we do talk about how great our teachers are, and then to get this very specific example is just wonderful, especially like Dr. Brummett said, in a year where we're really talking about equity and, and making sure that kids are all getting the fair, not, not, I guess we will go with a, a fair, not equal necessarily, because they all need different things. Chance, and, and what you're giving this stu, I, student is spectacular, and thinking about the kids that are nervous to come to school who do not, who didn't just move here from another country, who speak the language, who have all of the, the other things in place, you're, you're doing so much for them, and then this student comes with so much more, and all that you've done to make her feel comfortable and, and to thrive in our district is really heartwarming to me. And this is, you are one of the reasons that I love our district so much, and I'm grateful for all of your years that you've given to us, and, and I'm glad that we're celebrating you, even if you want to fly under the radar, I'm glad that we get a chance to hear the story and to celebrate you. So enjoy the moment and feel the love.
Thank you, Ms. Cam. Mr. Branda.
Thanks, Paul. So this is pretty interesting because Dr. Brummett talked about how she was in the school, and she saw this student walking around, and what's crazy is a few weeks ago, my wife and I were at the school to meet with Mrs. Jensen, and as we were waiting there for the meeting, we too saw the student that was referenced in the nomination, walking with another peer. And I remember thinking, like, how special and how cool that was, and I was with my wife, who's an educator, and she said the same thing. She's like, wow, this is what you, like, look at what you guys are doing. That is awesome. And I remember just watching the interaction between the peer and, and the student holding the translator, and I was just so amazed, and it was honestly, I was so proud to be in Newington at that moment. It was so special, and then to hear this, and just so you know, Mrs. Lucas, we don't know who's getting these awards or why they're getting them until it's read. So I got, I mean, I'm getting goosebumps now just thinking about it because I remember thinking about, I wish I had thought to find out why that was going on or how that came about, and then here we are, right? So I just, I'm just so blown away by it, honestly, and knowing that you led the charge to get that device in the student's hand, it speaks to how special you are to this town and as an educator. And honestly, just how special all of our educators are and that you felt like that was something you could do, and then to everybody's credit, they helped make it happen. And I think it's just so cool to see the students to respond to it and understand that they too can play a role, a very important role in this young student's life and in adapting to Newington, to Connecticut, and to this country. So I don't have a lot more words because I'm just amazed that this is all happening right now. So thank you for that moment, for the effort. But really, thank you for all of the kids whose lives you've touched throughout your career because I think it's pretty clear you were an everyday hero before this award, but this just kind of like put the stamp on it and makes it official. So thank you so much. Thank you for this moment. Thank you for everything that you've done, and thank you to Mrs. Dalton, who nominated you, and your third grade teacher peers who I see are on here to support you. Um, and I've got some messages on my phone that everybody's like, oh, my God, Mrs. Lucas is getting this award. So the town is watching, the parents are watching, they know how special you are, and I think it just says a lot about the person you are that you're getting this award. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon. Ms. Dan?
So I had all these little things in my head that I was gonna say, because it's really an exciting year for you because it's your last year, and you want to make it special, but you've made made your whole career special. And just all those little things about leveling the playing fields for all students and the love that you have and the equity, but listening to everybody, but Mr. Brandon, what he just said just put a major exclamation point on the whole reason why you're being recognized for this. Um, because someone like had, who had no idea how, you know, awesome you are as a teacher and as a caregiver to our children, you totally deserve this, and you know, we totally thank you, and so congratulations, and I'm so proud that you are a member of the staff in this town and that we were able to recognize you and yet your last year, and all those children who are gonna miss out on having you as a teacher. I, um, just congratulations. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Dan. Ms. Miki Hutanga?
Just want to say, um, ditto to what has been said before me, but to also say that I am an educator myself and just hearing about some of the things that you do and have done, um, I feel motivated to be a better teacher myself. So you're inspiring. Thank you so much.
Mr. Friesy, thank you, Beth.
Thank you very much. I'd, uh, I'd be remiss not to share being Beth's principal for six years and all the interactions that we've had throughout the years, um, that Beth is extremely charismatic. And, uh, and she always comes ready with high energy every day for her students and her colleagues. And the devotion that she has for what she believes in is unparalleled. So, um, Beth, I couldn't be more happy to see you receive this award and thankful for all you do. So, well deserved. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Mr. Friesy. Well, Beth, now it's your time. Do you wish to, uh, have a few words with us? We'd love to hear from you. Uh, microphone.
You can do it, BA.
Congratulations.
Thank you. First of all, thanks, my dad and his cutie wife from Florida, who wanted to join us tonight. I love you, Dad and Barb. I could not be who I am without my team. I love them. And all the teachers at Patterson are incredible. And this year with that student that I got, the student I get to work with from Turkey, I, um, in the past have always worked with special ed students and have welcomed having that dynamic in my room, and it was so nice to take a switch and have an English language learner this year. It just brought everything, like, I got to see it all in my career, and I encourage all teachers to be able to have the opportunity to work with all students and not just always have the same ones over and over again as sometimes ends up happening. Because we all become better from all the experiences we have and stronger. So I'm just, this has been a light this year to have something a little different and and just bring extra reward to me in my final year. Um, and thanks to Mr. Gatos for putting the bill when I, I was gonna buy it anyway, but just saying, I was gonna just get it, but it was really nice that there was a little extra money somewhere that that happened, and IT kind of didn't want to figure out how to do it, but they did, and I hope that it happens. Uh-oh. I hope that they, I know another teacher actually bought one with her own money this year, so it might be a whole snowball effect, so I apologize to the budget if that starts to happen. Um, but I just, I think it's so needed, and it's, I know that she feels better and I feel better, and she's already flourishing so much, and I don't know, I'm starting to babble now. I just I'm really honored to have been working in Newington. And I, I am glad to have all the students that I've had, and I appreciate you guys saying other students in my future would be missed, but sorry, I think I'll just be a bus driver and get one of those bow ties. I think maybe we could just do that. Uh, so I'm kind of done, but I thank you all, and I appreciate all the kind words. It means more to me than what you ever know. And yes, I like to fly under the radar, but this was really special. So thank you.
Congratulations again. Dr. Brummett, any closing words there?
No, I just am thrilled that Beth got to have these accolades this evening, and I couldn't be more proud of type of work she's done to help meet the needs of this student and others far more than this student, but certainly this student who has unique needs. So I will-
Dr. Brummett, if I could just jump in with one more. Mrs. Lucas, um, put a very professional spin on that, on how she advocated for this student. She may be small in stature, but when, uh, you know, when Beth advocates for kids, I don't care how big you are, you're not getting in her way, you know, and that is what I think makes not only Beth great, but a lot of our teachers at Patterson and throughout the district where they know what's right and good for kids, and, um, you know, they are just gonna do what they need to do to make sure kids learn. So again, Beth, great job. Super proud of you tonight. Well done. And I'm happy to foot that bill for the outcome like that.
Thank you, Mr. Gatos. Very good. Um, I see that there's a member of the public which wishes to speak. I'll let that person speak when we get into public participation, which is the next item on the agenda. So you just hang on a minute, and then I'll give you that opportunity. Okay. We are questioning, Beth?
Nope, just gonna move the slideshow to that.
Yes.
And there it is.
Okay, we are now moving on to item C on our agenda, which is, uh, public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Um, at this time, people from the public, if you raise your hand, I'll remind you that there's a three-minute limit on our, our public participation. I ask you to state your name and your address and, uh, for the record for us, and, um, I have Pamela Madrazo for the first public participation.
I think Madrazo. Not Madrazo, right?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I don't know why I'm sideways. Okay, well, hi. Oh, there we go. Pam Madrazo, 31 Steeplechase Drive in Newington. It's not necessarily related to board responsibilities, but I had to just chime in about Beth Lucas if I could. Um, there's not many people I would get on a video call for looking like this, but I didn't know Beth was being recognized tonight, and, uh, I'm gonna get emotional because she was just an angel in my life when my daughters were at Patterson. And, uh, talk about special, she's just truly amazing. I'm sad it's her last year. I'm thrilled that someone made me join this call tonight so I could see Beth's face and we could chat a little bit before everyone came on. Uh, but Beth, I'm going to just share a story because Steve Friesy referred to you as enthusiastic. And I do remember the day you went to pick up the kids in gym class and thought you'd show them how you can do a handspring. And I don't think that ended really well. I don't, I can't see her, but the Madrazo family has two vivid memories, Beth doing a handspring and breaking her wrist, and then needing to get paper, and, um, the paper came down and cut her retina or something. Like, she just is always going to do what she wants to do, what needs to be done, regardless of how it's going to affect her. And, uh, I just can't say enough good things about her. She's a little kid in an adult body, and, uh, she's, she's just the best. And Beth, you know, I told you before this call, I love you. We will always, always cherish you in this house. So that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak? And Ms. Madrazo, if you could take your hand down, I appreciate it. There you go. Thank you. Okay, I don't see anyone else in the public, so we'll move on to item D, which is a consent agenda from a regular meeting. Uh, Mr. Sylvia, would you like to move the consent agenda, please?
I wish to abstain, Mr. Vassella. Thank you.
Okay, could I have a member of the board move the agenda, please?
Move that we approve the meeting, the minutes of the, um, September 29th, 2021, regular meeting minutes.
Second?
Second?
Second is by Beth?
Beth.
Thank you very much. Notions been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Abstaining? Okay, motion passed.
As noted, I abstain. Thank you.
Mr. Sylvia has abstained. Okay, we're now moving on to new business. And under our new business for this evening, we have our student representatives. We have Vidisha back again. Thank you. And we also have a new member, James Vendetti, and as we made comment earlier, that's a new na- not a new name, but, uh, we have another Vendetti with us, which is wonderful. Maybe when we, Jim, when you get to your part, if you would be kind enough to maybe give us a little of your your background and give us a chance to meet you, a little post in personal, I'd appreciate that. So, uh, Vidisha or Jim, who's starting it off?
I'll be starting it off tonight.
Thanks.
Um, so just to mention some events that have already happened or will be having. We had a parent-teacher night at John Wallace, and it was super fun. I was volunteering for National Honor Society and just the parents, students, teachers, everyone was having so much fun, playing games, food trucks, and there's such a positive and lively atmosphere. And then we had the CGI taping of the school, and when I had my part and saw Dr. Brummett, it seemed to be going really well and smoothly. Uh, we are currently in the middle of our spirit week, so Tuesday was school spirit color wars, so each grade was assigned one of our school colors or something that's in our school logo. Today was Out of This World Wednesday, so space, NASA, aliens, all that. Tomorrow is Greasers versus Surfers, and Friday is Celebrity Day. You may or may not have heard, but Homecoming is being moved to Sunday due to weather conflicts, so it will now take place on Sunday from 5:00 to 8:30. October 20th will be Wacky Wednesday, Character Day. And, um, today, all grades except seniors took their pre-SATs. In terms of sports, soccer, the Booster Club is working to put together their Pinkout game and provide players with pink jerseys and and raise money to support breast cancer. Cheer is working hard to spread spirit and decorating behind the scenes for all their spirit days. Cross Country had their last non postseason meeting yesterday, uh, where the Booster Club finds pink simlets for team members to wear during the race in honor of breast cancer. Um, Newington raced against Weathersfield, and Newington actually won. Um, academics, class office elections took place last block day, and the results were announced. This year in particular was actually very competitive. There was a lot of interest in leadership positions. And seniors have been having their senior planning meetings with counselors to get guidance about the college application process and any questions they might have about scholarships. And I will pass it over to Jimmy.
Thanks, Vidisha. Hi, everyone. This is, just for the record, I like this. This is fun. Click over the attention. Um, uh, yeah, so I'm Mia's brother. Um, during the meetings, that sound in the background, that was me yelling at her. Yeah, so that's me. Um, uh, so as far as other stuff, uh, our music and arts program, so our chamber choir is getting ready for their dinner theater on October 28th, where we will have a variety of cabaret singers performing along with a one-night comedy called Wait, Wait, I Can Explain. As far as COVID restrictions go, we're going to have separate tables for every family, uh, and we're, uh, as far as the music department's concerned, we're not 100% sure what we're gonna do for food. We know we want other people to bring in snacks if they're gonna be eating. But they don't know if they're gonna be selling drinks yet. Uh, as far as the band goes, um, NHS marching, marching band will be performing as an exhibition band at the Suddington High School competition on October 23rd, which is not this Saturday, but the following Saturday. Um, as far as clubs go, um, so Stuco, new officers were selected, such as Moa. Um, and we're all working very hard to organize upcoming events such as Homecoming on Sunday. Uh, DECA, we're having a pumping, a pumpkin decorating contest on October 27th, uh, where DECA members will paint our car of pumpkins, depending on their preference, in the cafeteria to be entered into a contest. Selling merchandise for different spirit days like Black, that, that, that's all, that's what DECA has been doing, basically, just selling stuff for spirit days. And particularly, we have new Pinktober merch, and I think we're out of Blackout Day merch, but, uh, new Pinktober Day merch. Um, so, uh, Drama Club, we, they've been having rehearsals for the upcoming play, uh, which will be November 18th. Tickets, ticket sales will be next month. Onstage Crew is working to build the set for that show. Um, as far as honor societies go, uh, all honor societies are having monthly meetings, elected officers, or electing their officers, and are planning fall introductions. And that, that, that's it for the list unless you have to add anything, Vidisha?
I think we got everything.
Okay. Uh, thank you for listening to our report, and thank you.
Thank you, guys. Board members, any questions, um, of our student reps? Ms. Guyan and then Ms. Dan?
I'm just curious what the play will be in November. I'm already looking forward to it. I don't really, it doesn't matter what it is, but I'm curious.
Um, this year, uh, Newington High School Drama Department is putting on a production of Clue, so big murder mystery.
Awesome. Thank you, and welcome. We're excited to have you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Dan?
Yep, I just wanted to thank you for your report. I always love, enjoy, you know, hearing everything. Great reports, um, Vidisha and Jim, but welcome, Jim, and please be participants in the whole process as Board of Ed members. We have discussions when we talk about, um, special programming or anything that might weigh in, that gives us an education of how the student body feels. So totally welcome aboard, and thank you all for your participation. And Daisy says thank you, too.
Thank you, Ms. Dan. Ms. Weaver?
I was gonna say Daisy's so excited. Um, oh, do you go by James, Jamie, Jim? What is your preference?
Personally, I prefer Jimmy, but whatever works during the time.
Jimmy? Jimmy? Okay, perfect. All right, we'll get it right. Um, well, welcome. We're so excited to have you and going right into business, so really appreciate it. Um, and as always, Vidisha, thank you so much for all of your hard work, for putting in the efforts you do. I know it's a lot of happenings right now, and there's a lot going on in the school, so we always appreciate it. I'm very excited about Clue. I'm not going to lie. I know someone cast as Colonel Mustard, so I'm pretty excited. And really excited to hear that there's a lot of interest in student leadership. Um, that's something we're always excited to hear. We always are looking for, as we, you know, talked about our portrait of the graduate, we really want to encourage and foster leadership, so that's really awesome to hear that that's already being reflected. really awesome to hear that that's already being reflected. Um, you know, my time at Stuco was life for me too, so it's always good to see uh, our best and brightest come up and we're just really excited to have you. And like Ms. Sam said, we are always happy to have you put your input in, whether it's, you know, the fun stuff of Pinktober or we, we're talking about the, the fun stuff of budgeting. Um, so we're, we're always happy to have your input, uh, whether you have it or not. So um, just appreciate your time, your efforts. I know it's a lot of putting in report and always on a school night, so just thank you guys for, for putting in the effort and stepping up.
Thank you, Jessica. Vidisha?
Uh, just want to point out how good of a job Jimmy did, especially because I kind of threw this at him. I, I, I reached out to him and I was like, I want to work with another Vendetti and I, and I worked with him for DECA and I was like, I think you'd be a great addition to the board. So run and he ran and then like earlier this week, I was like, so board meeting and he's like, I have no clue what I'm doing, but I'll do it. And you guys can see why I was so adamant on having him, like such a fun personality and great voice to have.
Thanks, Vidisha.
Mr. Sylvia.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, James, uh, back at you. Bottom line is this, this is a real droll crowd, all right? Meaning they're gonna love your uh, upbeat personality and such, but the biggest ask I have is you need to bring the true environment that you're experiencing, much like with Vidisha and your um, other predecessor have done over the last year. They've been very open and candid in sharing with us the experiences that you guys are living each day. And so it's important for the board and the future members of the board hear your perspective, understand your um, perspective of what the schools uh, are experiencing. I mean, we always get what I call the nice, beautiful pictures from the administration, but I really want to hear and Vidisha did this and, and your predecessor did it. I'm asking you to do the same. Bring the, bring the humor, bring the joy, but bring the honesty. They need to hear the real story of what's going on at the schools. Thank you. Boy, welcome.
Thank you, folks. Any other comments? Dr. Brummett?
Just a warm welcome to Jimmy. Uh, I can see that you share enthusiasm with your sister. And uh, I'm very excited to have you join us. I also want to thank Vidisha. She was our student cameo in our promotional video, which I can't wait to share with the board when it's finalized, but she did a fantastic job with her comments and we can always count on Vidisha to be a, a high quality student rep in whatever she does. So thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody, thank you very much. Uh, we're moving on to our next item for discussion under new business and um, at our, one of our previous meetings, we had a chance to learn a little bit of something about the Muslim holiday and um, Mr. Brandon and a few other board members had brought up the topic of maybe we should investigate some of the other religious holidays. And uh, Dr. Brummett, do you want to take it from here or you want me to go with it?
No, I'm ready to go. Uh, we are trying to become as knowledgeable as we can about all the holidays that our students celebrate and uh, Mr. Brandon put us in contact with a gentleman by the name of Mr. Rajiv Desai. He's the president and co-founder of the, and I'm hoping to say this correctly, but Mr. Desai, please help me, of the Vallabhatam Hindu Temple on Church Street. And he is here to talk about Diwali, which is an important holiday for the Hindu faith. So I am going to turn it over to Mr. Desai and I will also help with running of his very brief PowerPoint that'll give us a good insight into the holiday. And I was also pleased to see that he's included some student voice in his presentation. Mr. Desai?
Yeah, hi. Uh, I'm Rajiv Desai. And first I would like to go, first me congratulate Beth. And also I want to salute all the Newington School bus drivers. So let me start the slideshow regarding Diwali. Diwali is our biggest and brightest and one of the most significant festival in India. So if you go to the slide second, it will talk about Diwali. So what is the meaning of Diwali? Diwali is a festival of lights. And Hindus celebrate this Diwali festival for seven days in India. And also we are celebrating in US in various parts. So during this Diwali, we basically celebrate like the way you celebrate Christmas, the same way we celebrate our new year called Diwali. So during this time, we do like vibrant color of entrance, we paint our house, we light up our houses, we do fireworks, we exchange gifts. We have exotic sweet and snake. So this festival is very important for our families and for our next generation. So this is about Diwali, is festival of light that is our new Hindu year. Can you go to slide second, please? So here are some of the student voice from the Newington High School, Newington Middle School. So lot of parents and students are very eager to have a Diwali holiday in Newington districts. So we are requesting you and these are some of the voice, if you want, I can read. Uh, like Nidi Vaswanathan, she said that getting an opportunity to participate in a family tradition like decorating our home, light up our lamps and celebrate with friends and family. So this is one of the voice from Nidi. She's from Newington High School. Then I have another voice from uh, Shuraya Pah Undapi. They're talking about giving us the same feeling of this celebration that we have in India. So all the prayers, rituals we offer during this time during the new year. And the ma- most important is in Newington, we have a two major temple, Hindu temple is located in Newington. These are the two largest temple in state of Connecticut. So that's another reason lot of people apart from Newington town visit our temple and celebrate this new year. The next slide, please.
I did switch it.
Yeah. Yeah, so after that, I have one more slide is about the voice of students. Yeah. These are the same family who has given us a really long voice about it, allowing us to dress in an Indian traditional ethnic wear, do a several art project we do with the family, we do the painting, we decorate our house, we light up the lamps for all seven days. This is our traditional thing and we go to temple for doing a prayer every day. So this is really important for the next generation to celebrate Diwali. And this is what about Diwali? So in Diwali, we do like fireworks, we exchange gift, we prepare sweep. It's more like a family time. And it is a festival of life. So we are requesting the board member, if you have any questions about why we celebrate Diwali. I'm more than happy to give some more insight, but this is a spiritual victory of light over darkness, good over evil, knowledge over ignorance. Also, since two thousand nine, United States president are celebrating Diwali in White House. This is a big thing. It is not in United States, it is in United Kingdom. I was in United Kingdom before. They celebrate Diwali in a grand way. And so we are also requesting the way they are celebrating in White House. Also, five years back, the post office has recognized a new year, a festival of light, they have also have a stamp on Diwali. You have seen that lamp? This is a stamp that is in a post office you can get about Diwali. So they have recognized Diwali, our Hindu new year, all over the world, in the state and also in the White House. And I have already mentioned we have two Hindu temples in Newington, one is located at twenty six Jersey and another six forty seven Mountain Road. So during this five days of grand celebration, they have a religious service during the, this five days, at least four time during the day. So people come with their families and friends, we get together, we exchange gift and we have like fireworks end of the day. So if you have any question about Diwali or any questions about the significance of Diwali, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Desai. Uh, Vidisha, I see your, your hand is up and if you'd like to start off the questioning, I appreciate it.
Um, it's not a question, it's just, I'm actually really excited right now that um, the board is hearing this out because every year I've been in school, I've taken off Diwali or like the morning of the new year to go to both temples. And it is a really big deal and I, I go in late to school or take the day off to go to the temples in the morning with my family to celebrate this big event. And every year I ask myself, I was like, I wish we had this day off, like even though I call in and say it's a religious holiday and get it off. I, I always wished that it was something we had off, so I appreciate you guys listening and hearing him out about it.
Just a follow up to, is there one day out of the festival that's more important than any of the other days? I, I know you said it was a multiple day festival.
Yeah, it is the last day of the new year is a special day for us. We call it a new year.
Very good. Thank you. Um, Mr. Brandon, your hand was up.
Um, Vidisha, I am so happy that you were here to, to see this and to hear it. So uh, right back at you on that. Um, Rajiv, can you, you and I spoke about other districts that have been having the same conversation. Can you just uh, inform the board about other districts in Connecticut that have had the same conversation recently? Because I think it's important to know that this is, this trend is starting to kind of take off and, and I just want everybody to, to get a good understanding of that.
Yeah. In recently, in a town of Farmington, they have also declared a holiday for Diwali. We have South Windsor also declared the holiday for Diwali. We are working with Rocky Hill Town to get it too. But these two towns, they have officially this year holiday for Diwali. And also in northeast, if you go to New York, New Jersey, I think sixty-five to seventy percent school district have a Diwali holiday. But in Connecticut, it has started and I think more and more towns are working on it and we have more than hundred families are living in Newington.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Guyan, your hand's up.
Thank you. Um, Michael, thank you for the work that you did to bring the conversation here today. Um, I read all of the material. And um, I was, thank you for providing all of the, the information ahead of time because I thought it was really helpful to be able to read it and kind of digest it. And it, in a, especially this year, as we were talking about equity in so many ways, I think it's a great time to be having this discussion. Um, and I think it's really important um, that we look at our community and celebrating our community and um, being equitable and, and how we, how, how we plan on what days we take off for celebrations and, and how they impact our families. And I'm very excited to be learning more about this and um, I'm very happy that we are talking about it. So thank you um, for all of this information here today.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Uh, Mr. Desai, I just want to thank you for, for coming and taking the time to not only educate us, but uh, the larger community. I think it's really important. Um, when I was in college, um, I was on a Bollywood team, which everyone usually is like, what, Jess? Um, but yes, uh, my roommate was the captain of Bollywood team and so um, I'm, I've been very close and, and learned a lot during my college career about the different holidays and Diwali being one of them. And it's been something that I think has obviously taken traction in, in surrounding towns, but I think it is somewhat overdue. And I think it's important for us to have this conversation, not only to highlight and educate others, but also to look at the process of why we do what we do. I think that's always a good thing. Uh, usually the worst answer is because it's always been this way and that's not really sufficient answer, I think, for any of that. So I think it's really important as not only our demographics evolve and as our uh, curriculum and other things evolve, um, I think it's really important that we take a look at the broader scope of, okay, we have all of these holidays off. What is the decision process like that? And I said this at the last time, um, meeting we, we talked about, but how are these things being decided, right? What's, there's, is it really just that arbitrary that it's always been done this way or it's always been the case this way? And I think it's really important for us to take a larger and broader view of, there's not just these, you know, X amount of days that that need to be considered. It's how it affects our student body, um, broadly so, because it is not just one student that's going to be impacted by this. It's going to be many. So I think it's, it's great that you came tonight and I appreciate Mr. Brandon for for advocating uh, and bringing Mr. Desai on. I just appreciate everyone's input. Vidisha, thank you. Um, this is something that I'm very excited to, to have a conversation about and uh, looking forward to, to more.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Ms. Dan?
I'm sorry. I just want to thank you for bringing this information forward and thank you, Michael, for bringing it um, to our attention because I do think it's very important that we look at all the possibilities of, of the, you know, making things equity and equitable. And I thoroughly enjoyed reading all the information and it was very interesting. Um, and I'm just really glad that we're starting to look at these things, um, because I think we need to do that as a board and as a town. So thank you.
Ms. Dan, I thank you, Ms. Dan. Um, Ms. Maggie Hutfanger.
Um, yes, I think it's important. Um, I think Ms. Ms. Weaver just brought this up and I just want to echo it again. Um, that we look at the process and have some discussions um, as a board regarding the process of deciding, you know, how, how this holiday thing, celebration, day off, whatever, how this comes about. Uh, and really looking closely at our demographics and what our community looks like. Uh, because our community is changing and it's important that we um, value and, and understand and respect and appreciate um, everyone in it. And, and thank you so much, uh, Mr. Brandon, for bringing this to our attention and um, bringing this information to our attention. Um, and thank you, Mr. Desai. Um, I definitely have some students in, in my own class that celebrate and I'm really excited to be able to talk to them this week and um, let them know what I've learned. And I think it's just a great way, um, if nothing else, for, for the staff to be able to connect and, and understand their students and, and share in their culture. So thank you so much.
Great. And again, I thank you, Ms. Desai for coming tonight. And, and I think as a board, when we look at our calendars um, for the coming upcoming year, and I believe that's going to be in probably the later meeting in November, if I remember correctly, when we'll be setting calendars and this would be something that the board by that time would be able to take into consideration and decide what would be best for our, our community. So um, again, I thank you for your time and um, sharing with the board. And I thank the board members for their um, willingness to investigate and to educate themselves at a board meeting, which I think is a a part of our job too, is to learn as we go. So I appreciate the efforts from everyone on this. Um, if there is nothing else on this topic, we will move on to our next agenda item. And our next agenda item is the proposed reallocation of the bus garage, bus yard. Uh, Dr. Brummett?
Thank you. I am going to run a presentation, so I'm gonna see if Mr. Ferisi or Ms. Kraus could help me um, yield any questions. I would also like to say that um, this presentation is a collaborative effort between myself, uh, Mr. Barnes, Mr. Jakimowicz, um, Mr. Myers and Mr. Morgan, who are all on the line tonight. So they may be chiming in either during the presentation or to help with any questions. So I'm just gonna launch right in and uh, talk about the background. Uh, just as a reminder, when the uh, town hall was under construction and we had to relocate our buses. This of course precedes my time here in Newington, but I was made aware of an MOU, a memorandum, memorandum of understanding that after construction ended, the board would then take back over Garfield Street for their uh, board operations, uh, sorry, board bus operations. So shortly after construction ended and the, and the um, area was put cross rock and other preparations, the board did indeed bring buses back from the high school and start operations there fully again, late last year, last school year. So and I did share the MOU with the town manager because again, it also predated his tenure. Short, about two weeks ago, maybe a little more, the town manager approached me and indicated that he had been, received communication from the Conservation Commission that they wanted us off Garfield Street because it was infringing upon their wetlands and they had some concerns about that. So I did ask the town manager to share that memo with me and I do have it linked to the board presentation. And I was actually pleased when I got the memo, though the town manager indicated they want us off the Garfield Street property, the memo didn't really read that strongly. What it actually read was, you know, we, we do appreciate that there's been changes here and that the construction has ended, but we would like you to please restore the positioning of the buses to where they were prior to twenty seventeen, I believe, or twenty sixteen. Well, whatever predated the construction of town hall. Again, when I arrived, it was already underway. So with my colleagues this evening, we've prepared a presentation to try to address this, what this relocation would mean to operations. And so the board is fully informed. There's really not going to be, this is not an action item this evening. It's simply to keep the board fully informed of this proposal. So in this picture, we are showing you our current operations on Garfield Street. In other words, this is where the buses are currently positioned in Garfield Street. This would represent the bus yard or the bus, where the bus offices are, where the garages are that maintenance is conducted. We do have some of the bays currently being used by town building officials, building and ground folks rather. And that was something that the town manager approached me about as a collaboration that they be allowed to reside there at least temporarily because of inadequate spacing at the new town hall. This slide shows where the line is, where the wetlands begin. And this is where that it existed back prior to town hall construction. So this yellow line is wetlands, the delineation beyond that or behind it where my cursor is is, is what the Wetlands Commission approved as what can be used in that buffer area by board operations. So that was, that was already in play before construction on town hall began. Since we've been back on Garfield, this line again is superimposed. The way that it was prepared by the town for when we reintegrated back into this area, it extended beyond where the wetlands folks allowed. We didn't realize this because we were not in charge of how this was prepared. We simply, when it was ready, brought the buses back over from the high school. So what is, what's being asked by the commission is certainly attainable if we move the buses back in front of this yellow line. And this, by the way, this is an imaginary yellow line, but it just delineates the wetlands. We can certainly do that. We weren't aware that this was a concern. Obviously now we are. The only challenge would be because now we've been lending our space to some of our town trucks, et cetera, that may need to change in order to accommodate all of our buses if we were to move them a little further away from that buffer zone of concern. So that's, that's how we can address that memo. And now I'd like to kind of go into what the proposal is for this relocation so that the board can fully understand that and the implications. So the proposal is that all buses, or most rather, should move to Alumni Road and take over the athletic parking lots. Any buses that don't fit there, and there will be some because this parking lot is not large enough for all of our buses, the town manager believes they should be moved to the NHS student parking lot. In our discussion, he indicated that he often drives by the student parking lot and it's not that full. However, in the fall, that is true. But in the spring, after our students get their licenses, that lot becomes very busy. And during the relocation of the buses back during the town hall construction, it was a significant concern and inconvenience for high school to have that lot interrupted. As a side note, our marching band also uses that when they're practicing. They used it last Friday night. So it is used for multiple purposes. The Board of Ed parking lot that is on Alumni Road would be eliminated and that would impact sporting events and practices, which we'll get into momentarily. The board, the town manager believes that we can access the Newington Arena and the VA Hospital parking lot to alleviate parking concerns. But we would need to make the walk or we need our guests or our folks who are attending games walk from NHS to Alumni Field. The barrier gate that is required by the state that's on Alumni Road because of safety issues at the intersection of Cedar and Alumni would also have to be opened. People who are familiar with town was, might know that that gate right now is open because I believe it's damaged, but per state mandates, it's supposed to be closed because it's not really meant to be a thoroughfare due to safety concerns. The town also would have to get approval from the state to modify Alumni to Cedar Street operations and allow only right-hand turns out of Alumni Road onto Cedar Street westbound. The town's proposal means that you could not take a left from Alumni to Cedar Street because that, with buses doing that, you can imagine the traffic jam. The bus office on Alumni Road would be a mobile trailer without any water, without water service or sanitary sewer service. Water would have to be brought in like bottled water and an outside service would do a waste pumping service to that facility. We have not seen any reports yet on how safety might be impacted on that roadway, but we've asked Mike Morgan to help us assess that. And what I've heard from the town manager is this was something he'd recommend to begin in summer of twenty twenty-two. So just as some aerial footage that may help you to understand, this is the NHS Sports Complex. This is the football field, baseball field, and over here is the Alumni Parking Lot. And that is where we currently have parking for all of our games that are focused on the back end of the complex, which is also track, field, baseball, and obviously football. And this is the Alumni Road where Cedar Street would intersect. And as you can see, this is Alumni Road coming out. That's the gas station there. We believe that if this were to happen, this corner area here would somehow have to be modified because otherwise buses would probably go over it, sorry, on their way out to Cedar Street. And so those are the two pictures that I think illuminate some of the current situation and what could be some challenges. Certainly worked with Mr. Barnes, his office about what would this mean for bus operations? He, he's familiar with this and I forgot to mention, we did meet with town manager, Gary Furstenberg and the town's new facilities director to discuss this along with Lou, myself and Dean. And during the course of this meeting, we heard what their proposal was. There, there were blueprints already drawn up. We didn't know about it. The blueprints were already long drawn up by the time we were brought into the conversation. But the, again, after that meeting, we debriefed and Mr. Barnes indicated that the proposed bus office would not be adequate for training needs and office functionality, that we'd still have a bus maintenance area on Garfield. So in this proposal, essentially, we'd have buses that would be on Garfield if they were being serviced, buses stored at NHS and buses on Alumni Road. So our bus operation would go from essentially one location to three. The acreage and utilities at Alumni Road do not fully support a consolidated bus operations. And as it was explained by Mr. Furstenberg during our meeting with him, that he's pushed his blueprints out as far as he can without infringing upon wetlands. So there really isn't any more land that he can access to expand the operations. So when we had our conversation, it was clear that not all the buses would fit on Alumni Road. We have not yet seen or are aware of any safety or security analysis being done. And we, last I checked, any state waivers that would be necessary for this to happen. In other words, making the right-hand turn only out of, out of Alumni or that gate being permanently open, we don't aren't aware of that being approved by the state. So we have concerns about buses turning safely right onto Cedar, both from the spacing aspects of it. Plus, it's, there's a fence there and there is going to be a blind spot as buses try to take a right-hand turn onto Cedar. There's a lot, there could be a lot of traffic volume, speed, low lighting and sidewalk issues that will create potential safety risks and challenges for bus operations. And in the event of snow, which in Connecticut is a high probability, and with the lot being gated for security purposes, there will not be adequate spacing there for snow removal, especially if we get more than, you know, a light dusting. I've worked with Mr. Myers about what does this do to athletics? And he has shared that we utilize Alumni Parking more than just for Friday Night Football Games. It's parking for practices, games. It would have a significant impact on football, baseball and track and field seasons, both practices as well as contests. The VA Parking Lot, first of all, we'd have to get their permission. But during the day, when some of these events happen, that parking lot is still being used by the VA for their own operations. So it really isn't available. Currently, we do use it for Friday Night Football Games and that's often where our visitors park, including the visitors' buses. Again, we've already talked about the safety issues. Fieldhouse and conditioning programs, students would have to now walk on Alumni Road after dust to get back to their vehicles. I would be very concerned about how this would impact parents or other spectators about parking during a game of any sort. And we really would have to get permission from our neighbors, which would be the hockey rink, ice skating rink and the VA to really avail themselves of, avail ourselves of their spaces because he, both would have to allow for it on a regular basis. I'm now going to turn it over to Mr. Myers to kind of walk us through what parking looked like last Friday night and what that might mean if that parking lot were eliminated. Chris, I'm gonna kick it to you.
Thank you, Dr. Brummett. So, you know, some of the concerns and obviously this is a, you know, a Friday night contest. So what you're viewing right now in the bottom hand of your screen, that's the top of our fieldhouse. And what you're seeing is Alumni Road and you can see that the, the traffic is relatively heavy. And this is kind of, you know, after game. So this is a point where, you know, all the fans don't stay until the end of the fourth quarter. You know, some people are leaving at halftime, but you can already see this road is pretty jam-packed. Many of them are people coming out of that Alumni Road lot that gets filled every single contest. And then we have overflow that goes into the VA parking spots on Friday evenings when their workers have now left for, for the evening. So we do have some available spaces. But this is that Alumni Road lot, so you can imagine where these cars go. Right now, you can see that there's pretty high traffic. This is a great view. This looks over, one of the recommendations that came across was that we potentially could create a relationship with the Ice Arena for, and use some of their parking spaces or their parking lot. But as you can see, you know, this is a October eighth Friday evening. And you can see this is a view of the Ice Hockey Arena Parking Lot with almost every space taken. And what you see in the back, the back left, you can see, you know, one of the buses that are used to bring teams in and out. And the Ice Arena has events like this all the time. So the expectation that we would be able to utilize their lot whenever we need it is not really one that would be able to be viable for us. Because they do have events that take place all the time. They're an operation of business and they have people coming from all over the Northeast to play in these contests. And it's not just, you know, one event and out. For those of you that have been in the Newington Arena, it, it's kind of a constant revolving door. One group comes in, the next group goes out. So you're also getting a lot of traffic coming from there at these times. So to increase traffic and flow on this side could become a major issue for, you know, not just us, but for the community as a whole. So now you're seeing a view of the VA lot. This is after the contest, again, eight forty-seven. You know, people have left, you know, as the game was going on. This is just the end of the game. These are all the spots. We played Glastonbury. You know, we're having, we're having a very good season. But Glastonbury is nowhere near a rivalry game for us. And what you can see is that almost every spot is taken in this lower area in the VA lot. You also have a line of cars, many of them coming to pick up some of their kids or family members from the contest. But you're seeing that it's pretty jammed up already. And this is already with some individuals leaving the lot. So you could just imagine if this is the only lot we're relying on, it could be a very big challenge. And to be honest, it's just not going to hold the flow of traffic that we have. And I think there's, yeah, there's one more photo. This is one more good photo of the VA lot. And again, this is eight forty-eight. This is after the game has ended. And you're seeing almost every single one of these spaces is occupied. So you could imagine if we eliminated our main parking doors, you know, where would we be recommending these individuals to go? And, and this is a Friday football game, actually convenient for us because the VA allows us to use some of these spaces. If you go to, and it's something that Dr. Brummett and Mr. Jakomowitz and Mr. Barnes and I talked about when we discussed this, in the springtime, you face an even larger challenge because you're bringing in multiple track teams that could be hundreds of kids each. If you have a baseball game also going on, you're talking about another fifty or so individuals. So that many families that we bring, we pack that lot very often. And really, our recommendation would be go park at somebody else's spot if we lost that, that Alumni Road lot. But I think these, these photos give you a very good idea of what a Friday night might look like. And where would these individuals go if we didn't have that gravel lot to be utilized?
Thank you, Mr. Myers. And just as a follow-up, the impact athletics, currently we have about a hundred and fifty spots at the Alumni Road lot. And then people also use the streets for about twenty-five cars. And we do have access to two hundred and fifty spots at the VA, which currently are in use. We don't believe for most of our athletic events that the arena, if they were to give us permission, would be a viable area for our parking. And they'd have to, again, it's a private entity, so they'd have to give us permission. So I, you know, someone's trying to get into the meeting. Let me just let them in. I don't know. Were there any questions while I'm letting another person into the meeting?
Ms. Guyon had her hand raised.
Thank you. I have been to many football games on Friday nights and I have never seen that the Ice Arena not total, it's full every single weekend. A couple of other things is some of our athletic contests happen during the daytime hours. Baseball and track will often happen during the daytime hours. So like you said, the, the other fields aren't available. So, but another thing about Friday night, so Friday night, there was a football game. There's the soccer club in Newington has games on Friday night. So the high school parking lot is already full from the soccer families. And then volleyball had a game. So the other side of the high school was full from volleyball spectators. So we were already using both of our, all of our parking at the high school essentially. There was, I guess, some spots in the back, but minimal. Those are already being used. So I'm not sure where else people would go. And the idea of having people walk along that Alumni Road, it's, it's pretty narrow for cars. That, that, I would have some major concerns there that, but I was just looking at not only the football game and where all those cars were, but also then everybody else. And then even after the football game, if you watch a lot of the band parents come and pick their kids up. So then that whole So then that whole, even down that whole road in front of the high school is full of cars waiting. So it really just, there's no space.
Thank you, Ms. Guyan. Mr. Sylvia, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Paul. All right, so I'm just going to come out and say it. I oppose this suggestion. Alumni Road is Alumni Road. We all know it and we know how the traffic is when it gets to Cedar. And there was a reason why the state put the gate up. All right, so, Dr. Brummett, I need to try to understand just from my own sanity, who's asking us to move off of Garfield Street?
This proposal was brought to me by the town manager.
Okay, thank you. So my understanding has been over since the infamous diesel spill that the town was trying to work with us to find a joint location that both the town and the Board of Education would benefit from. So I would respectfully suggest we go back to the town manager and say, punt, try again. This is not a viable solution. No matter how you cut it, Ms. Guyan is spot on with her observations. I've been going to football games for, well, I won't give away my age, but it, it's not a viable solution. The splitting up of our buses, I, I can see shuttle buses now taking the bus drivers to their buses or stuff like that. No, I, I'm sorry. Thanks for bringing it to our attention, but I don't like the smell of this at all. And I can't support it. And even though I won't be around to vote on it, I sure can hell make a lot of noise about this. This is not a good solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvia. Ms. Weaver.
And I love when we're all in agreement, not good, but yeah, I guess, yeah, obviously, thank you for bringing up all these concerns. It's not good if we have our athletic director and our director of transportation and everyone else not, not in support of it. I, I think we like to keep everyone happy here. I guess my question and to Mr. Sylvia's point, you know, in terms of kind of where do we go from here type of deal? Obviously, this was given a proposal by the town manager, but obviously this comes out of the concern of the Wetland Commission or the Conservation Commission. What happens in terms of if, like the Wetland, the Conservation Commission wants to see a change clearly? What happens if we just keep our buses there right now as we look for another solution? I guess that's kind of, not to just dismiss everything you just completely said, but in terms of what is our duty in terms of this presentation, just simply saying we disagree or agree with it? Or kind of proposing our own solution? Or is it on the town, to Mr. Sylvia's point?
I'd be happy to field those questions. Well, currently, based on the MOU, we can remain at Garfield Street as was agreed upon by my predecessors and the town manager's predecessor. And I will say that over the course of the last two years, Mr. Chapman and I have discussed numerous possible options, but none of them have worked out. And then he came to me with this very recently, but he had already gone through like a design phase. So I had agreed during our meeting that I would work with my colleagues to get, you know, get, analyze it, get more information. And, you know, obviously I wanted to hear from the Wetlands Commission as to what their concerns were. We can move our buses to be in compliance with their requests in that memo. It would require us to reclaim the bays that we had a gentleman's agreement to let the town use while all of this was in flux. I, I would certainly welcome any opportunity to try to collaborate on alternative sites. I think there's some ideas we've had that could be viable, but they may be rather costly because they're not existing cleared parcels of land. There's some areas that previously were considered part of Fafner that may be considered. And I believe Mr. Sylvia was correct that at some point, if there's a piece of land that could accommodate all of our operations, why wouldn't we do that? But again, that probably will cost money that we'd have to really, you know, give thought to and think about appropriations. But no, I believe tonight's presentation, which I'll wrap up very quickly, was meant to make sure the board was fully informed of this conversation because, you know, I believe that this type of major decision would need to be, you know, something the board is fully aware of. So are there any other questions? Because I can't see anybody right now since I'm presenting.
Yeah, we have Emily, Jimmy Vendetti and Beth Manke-Huffanger. There are three questions out there. Emily, first.
Just one last thing that I must advocate for the marching band. I would be very disappointed to have the buses back at the high school because I know that impacted their program dramatically. And there's so many students that are involved in the marching band. And it is a fantastic program. And they, practicing on the fields is not, does, is not, doesn't work out well because anytime it rains, they have to cancel in the parking lot. If it rains, as long as it's tops, they can get out there and do their work. But I know that had a huge impact on their program. And I would be remiss if I did not advocate very strongly for the marching band having that space that they need for their program. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Jimmy.
So Mr. Sylvia said that I should, that as student board of, or yeah, as student board of reps, our job is to give the opinion of the students. And I can tell you right now, if this goes through, there will be outrage because I park in those lots. All of my friends park in those lots. Everybody parks there, even like, and like Ms. Guyan said, we have marching band. You're not, you don't just go to a football game to go see the football game. You go to hang out with your friends, go to see marching band. It's, we need those spots or else it's just not going to look. You're going to, it's not even just that, but like, it's also like a danger thing. Like you, if you try to cram cars into other spots, then you put us in danger of like car accidents and stuff. Just, that's my two cents.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Beth.
Thank you so much for speaking up and sharing that, Jimmy. I think that's so important. And Mr. Sylvia was correct. You, your, your opinions are so vital to this process. I just wanted to say, like, I'm kind of like going through a checklist here. And I don't really see one thing that, that's working about having it in this location. So kind of to echo what Ms. Weaver said, I would love to be able to send this back and say, this is not going to work. And really start to be proactive and really explore other options as soon as possible. And until then, perhaps move those, those town vehicles and reclaim that, that area for now.
Thank you, Beth. Mr. Sylvia.
Thank you, Paul. Jimmy? You earned your paycheck today.
Okay, Dr. Brummett, those are all the questions. We're back to you.
Perfect. And I'll wrap things up because I'm getting a pretty clear sense of where the board is on this. Thank you to Mr. Morgan, who helped me gather what might be some security and safety considerations. That Alumni Road is a very dark, desolate situation where once everyone leaves at the end of the night and our buses are there, it's, it's, could be quite a target for vandalism or theft. The lack of athletic parking would lead to potentially dangerous conditions, I believe. Let me stated that rather eloquently, what it could do for students who are young and walking back and forth and maybe driving. There would have to be significant investment in fencing, security upgrades and lighting. And if Alumni Road is open to all traffic during bus operations, there really is a high potential for accidents. Mr. Morgan was able to ascertain for me these faint pink dots that you see. Those are about, there have been about six accidents over the last three years on this road. I don't know if that's considered high-low or otherwise. I think one could reasonably predict that that would go up if this area were opened up to that kind of bus traffic and citizen traffic that would have to happen to make this arrangement work. So at this point, I'm going to open it up to questions. And I don't know if any of our speakers that helped put this together or collaborators would like to add a few comments that haven't already been covered.
I don't see any hands up. But this was a discussion item on our agenda. So from the discussion, I would think that is, Dr. Brummett, as you said, the board clearly is in opposition of this. And I believe you would have the support of the board if this came to requesting a vote. I see Mr. Barnes has come forward. Mr. Barnes?
Yes, Paul. One of the things that is very important to realize in any kind of an operation, that when you start splintering, such to Mr. Sylvia's point and to Dr. Brummett's point, when you start splintering apart a operation, you start losing the ability to maintain and oversee that operation completely. And in the school bus industry, it is very important and very vital having two operations, one at the high school for the period of time that we did. And also here, when I came onboard a little over three years ago, it was just very convoluted. It was very difficult. We need to see our drivers in the morning to give them messages for stop changes, for things that are of urgency. And if they are not here, it just made it very, very difficult. So as we go forward, I would encourage the board, as was shared, to whatever discussions come forward in collaboration with town, that whatever facility or whatever property is proposed, that it adequately fulfills the need of the operation going forward. And the proverbial kicking the can down the road just to make a patch here and then be splintered off in parking buses and not having the garage and not having our complete operation in one location is something that I would totally ask support that that is not allowed or promoted going forward.
Great. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Burns. Dr. Brummett, I turn it back to you.
Thank you. I, I would just say that based on this feedback, I would probably want to transmit communication to the town manager, maybe including this presentation and the fact that I received input from important stakeholders who are far more knowledgeable about bus operations, security and sports than me. But nevertheless, very important to this discussion. So I would transmit that back to the town manager. Again, this wasn't necessarily officially a proposal. It was something he wanted a consideration, but I really felt it important for the board to be fully informed. So the next item is Health Benefit. Is that okay for me to go forward with that? Very good. We, we actually did have a presentation a few months back at the end of last year with regard to the Health Benefit Fund. And as we predicted and as, as we discussed previously, the reason we don't budget for it in the previous year's budget is because the amount is subject to change. And sure enough, it did. Whereas earlier in the spring, it looked like this Health Benefit Fund might equal about $1.5 million, almost 1.6. That has dwindled to $701,000. We've explained to the board that these, that we get all of our direction from the town as to how to budget for health insurance. We pushed it as far out as we could this year. And really, we're able to reduce everything quite to the lowest we could go based on our, the recommendations from our agent of record. So the, as you can see, the Health Benefit Fund predictions went almost in half from what we saw in the spring. So tonight, we did receive that communication from Janet Murphy, Town Director of Finance, giving us the end result of the Health Fund. I would appreciate the board's endorsement of allowing me to use that money at my discretion with variables with COVID this year. The board may recall that as part of our budget process last year, I did state that since we have not received any allocation for technology for the last two years, that likely this Health Benefit Fund would help keep us afloat with our technology needs. However, with COVID still in play, there could be other things that come along. And the grant I got from the state is very prescriptive and it's already been allocated. Actually, it wasn't a state grant, it was a federal grant. We've already, you know, allocated that pretty much down to the penny. So that would be my recommendation, but I will turn that back over to Chairman Vassella.
Thank you, Dr. Brummett. There is a, this has been discussed, there is a motion in your packet. If we could have that motion presented and then we can have discussion regarding that motion and any questions that might come up.
I can read it.
Thank you.
Because of, because of all the uncertainty surrounding COVID-19 and the lack of town funding in the area of technology, it is recommended that the Board of Education allows the superintendent to transfer these funds at her discretion to address these issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Guyan. Motion has been made and seconded. We're now open for discussion. Mr. Sylvia, your hand is up.
Thank you, Paul. I'll speak for myself on this one. I fully support any sort of discretion that the superintendent might present to us. She has demonstrated thus far to date that she's made very wise decisions on where money should be allocated. And she's taken in her inputs from various sources. The only ask I have is, is that as you reach your recommendations, Dr. Brummett, or your suggestions, is that you kindly share your suggestions with the future board so that they're fully aware. I only say this because I'm still experiencing emails from October of 2015 when $1.2 million showed up to buy 10 vehicles that nobody knew about. So that's the only ask I have is that future board members are aware. You know, Robert's back online now with his, I mean, Robert remembers those, that fun month in 2015. So I, that's my only ask from this particular motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. I really appreciate this. I just wanted to reiterate or clarify again, just so it's full transparency. This would be separate. You already have allocated all the COVID funds. So this is not going to even touch any of that, correct?
Correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Twofelt? Bob, you ain't unmute? Still muted, Bob. Should be a little microphone at the bottom of your screen.
I, I keep losing.
There you go. Well, you're off again.
And what was this $700 figure, seven million or $700,000 figure again?
That is the Health Benefit Fund balance.
And how much was it?
$701,000. Let me get the exact 70149.
Okay. The thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on the Health Benefit motion? Seeing none, Ms. Craig? If you would repeat the motion, the motion read, "Because of the uncertainty surrounding the COVID-19 and the lack of town funding in the area of technology, it is recommended that the Board of Education allow the superintendent to transfer these funds at her discretion to address these issues." Motion was made, seconded, discussion held. And if, Ms. Craig, if you will call the vote, please.
Michael Branda.
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Yes.
Emily Guyan.
Yes.
Yes.
Beth Manke, Hut Wagner.
Yes.
Steven Sylvia.
Yes.
Cindy Stan.
Yes.
Robert Toffelt.
Yes.
Pava Sala.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
The motion passed unanimously, 9-0.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to our next action item. And that is the agreement between the Board of Education and the Newington Association of School Administrators. This is a contract that has been, been worked out. If we can have the motion read and then we can have a discussion there.
I can read it, Paul.
Thank you.
Move to approve the agreement between the Board of Education of the Town of Newington and the Newington Association of School Administrators, July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2026, as proposed.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Seconded, seconded. Mr. Branda, maybe the second. And discussion. Mr. Sylvia.
I'll just go on the record. I can't support this particular only because of the reasons shared during the executive session of for public consumption. I was not provided a copy of this until the end of the meeting, of which I respectfully decline only because of the inherent warnings that came with, within the meeting. To that end, because I do not have a habit of voting on something that I've never read, I cannot support this motion at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvia. Any other discussion on the motion from the board? Mr. Branda.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make clear that we did have a full committee that didn't have a few members, so to Mr. Sylvia's point. But there were six members of the board on the committee that worked with Mr. Farisi and Dr. Bremet and the entire team on this contract. And we're just thankful to the NASA crew for working with us and meeting us, you know, right where both sides need to be. Because I think that this contract is for the benefit of the town. It's obviously for the benefit and the security of our great administrators. But this is a very well-done contract. And I understand Mr. Sylvia's point. However, every contract negotiation was done like this, where there was a committee. And then we got an update from Mr. Farisi after the committee. So this is not an unusual circumstance, but I do understand the concern.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver.
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Farisi and the NASA team and every administrator that worked on this. We really appreciate your efforts. We know how much work goes into this and everything that you laid out was, was great for us. And as a board, we appreciate being informed and appreciate your efforts. So thank you all.
Ms. Gayan.
Well, I was not a member of this subcommittee. I've been on the negotiation committees for more contract negotiations than I care to count at this time. And I know a tremendous amount of work goes into it. And I really appreciate the way that this went down this year, that NASA, I know, was a great partner in the administration and our committee. So thank you to all of you for all of the work that you put in. And I appreciate also the thorough briefing that we got on, on the contract. And I've been through the contract many times previously and, and I feel very comfortable with where we have landed.
Thank you, Ms. Gayan. Ms. Dan.
I just want to thank the NASA group and Mr. Farisi for all the work they put in and for their collaboration in working with the subcommittee. Because they, they really truly are a good group to work with. And they do keep in mind what is appropriate and what is doable for the town. And we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dan. Mr. Twofelt. Need to unmute, Bob?
I have to agree with Steve on not having the paperwork prior to being able to vote on this motion. I would say that when we do get the paper, I sure hope it doesn't appear on Facebook like some of the other items that have in the past. So this was done in the executive session. So I hope everybody obeys by the rules of the executive session. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Twofelt. I don't see any other comments. So the motion that's before us is move to approve the agreement between the Board of Education of the Town of Newington and the Newington Association of School Administrators from July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2026, as proposed. Ms. Craig, if you would call the roll vote, please.
Michael Branda.
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Yes.
Emily Gayan.
Yes.
Beth Manke, Hut Wagner.
Yes.
Steven Sylvia.
No.
Cindy Stan.
Yes.
Robert Toffelt.
No.
Pava Sala.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
The motion passes 7 to 2.
Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to the next section of public participation on matters relating to the board. Again, we are limited to three minutes of public. If you would say your name and address. And we have the link on the screen. And I don't see any hands up in our public gathering. No, nothing there. Okay, so we will move to remarks by board members. I guess at this time, I usually don't give my two cents worth at the start, but I, tonight I'd like to. This will be the last regular board meeting of the seated board. And I do really want to thank the people that have participated in the last two years. It has been an honor to serve. And I do thank you all for what you've done. Bob Twofelt, Stu Stee Sylvia, Emily Gayan, Cindy Stan are not running for reelection. And I, I thank you for the service. Your time that you put into the board goes without, without question. It's hours and hours that the public has no idea the amount of time. So I thank you for everything you've done. And I wish all the people the best of luck in the election. I see we have some possible board members in our audience. And I appreciate their, their service and being here and tuning into the board. And with that being said, let's go with a show of hands, a few comments of board members. And I know, Dr. Bremet, you had something you wanted to share. Why don't we do your, your point first and then I'll open it to the rest of the board members, if that's okay with you?
Absolutely. And I will also echo your comments about those who are departing the board. I can't even tell you how much I've enjoyed working with you all. I believe all the departing board members actually hired me. So for that, I'm very appreciative as well. I will miss you all. I look forward to, we will have a little bit of a send-off in a few weeks where I can share more detailed sentiments at that time. But for those that may not join us on that evening, I do really want to express my gratitude. It's a very challenging, but hopefully rewarding job that for which you get no pay, other than hopefully some satisfaction. And Paul, in particular, your, your role as board chair has been stellar. Your background in education is such a huge asset. And I look forward to celebrating all of you in a few weeks. I did want to take this opportunity to, for lack of a better word, set the record straight. I was able to attend the town council meeting last evening, which I often do, just to keep abreast of issues that the town is, is working on. And some, some, there were some items last night relevant to board business. But I, I was a bit stunned by a comment made by the town manager relative to budgeting. And I believe he started it by saying that he's, he's getting some negative press relative to his commitment to giving another zero to the board this year. And in the course of that dialogue, the town manager referenced the Newington High School roof project as evidence that the board is not good with their budgeting strategies and therefore needs to have this, he calls it zero-based budgeting. And if I may, I just want to take a couple of minutes to set the record straight about that. Because what was particularly upsetting to me is I really thought the NHF roof project was really a collaborative between myself and the town manager, with board support, of course. And the remarks last night did not, did not indicate that. For the record, on February 17, I approached the town manager about the NHS roof project. The, the section of the roof that I referenced above the STEM lab and art areas was really on its last legs. There were leak issues. It had to be done. We budgeted for it in the town CIP. At that time, he asked me to hold off because he was working on a roof and solar project combined. So again, trying to be collaborative, I did hold off. I waited. March kind of came and went. I finally heard back from the town manager on April 27, in which she said, you know what? You know, we don't necessarily have any funding to support the roof right now. Why don't you do what you can do as a board? And we'll, you know, if anything changes, I'll let you know. So then we went about getting estimates and Lou Giacomo, it's did a very thorough job. And on June 26, I reached out to the town manager again. It indicated that because of the delay, costs had escalated significantly on roofs. As everyone knows, COVID's had a tremendous impact on cost to do anything building-wise, material-wise. And now the cost of the roof would exceed what we could do on our own. In other words, it surpassed the $250,000 threshold for, which now requires a building committee being instated. So I discussed that with the town manager. I also let him know that we had done the estimate based on the fact that we would seek state reimbursement. Therefore, the state requires a lot of bells and whistles that you might put on a roof that you wouldn't necessarily have to do if you were going to do it on your own without regard for state reimbursement. At that point, he said, oh, wait, hold off. I may be able to get some contractors to look at this now. He mentioned a company called Silk Town. So I said, oh, okay, you know, let us know what you find out. On July 2, Silk Town did a flyover with drones and determined that they could do the work without regard for state reimbursement because they weren't going to do all of those requirements that the state requires for $200,000. We ran that by Chairman Vasella. He worked with the building committee, facilities committee, rather. And we did a brief memo until a board meeting could be held. Folks may recall that at that time, I was on medical leave or heading into medical leave. So on July 14, Chairman Vasella drafted a memo indicating the board's support for that project, the lower cost, the cost savings. It was fantastic. And sometime in August, the work was done. In the course of last evening's meeting, the town manager portrayed that entire event as poor budgeting on the board side. That we let, we were almost going to go with a higher cost and he came in and, and, you know, made sure we did not. And I just really, I can't express my disappointment. I thought it was a collaborative thing. We worked really hard on that. In fact, we were able to get another section done. And I'm thrilled with the cost savings, but the, the representation last evening was not that. It was that there was a very, I don't know if the word weakness was used, but certainly the, the conversation was that the board, which obviously was myself and Mr. Giacomo, it's just weren't doing a proper job with the budgeting for that whole project. But I, I just want to set the record straight. We were very thorough in our approach. I am very conscious about taxpayer dollars. Saving money and doing a good job with things is very important to me. The collaboration, I thought, was positive, but I really could not let that go undiscussed tonight. So thank you, Chairman Vasella, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Bremet. Okay, go back to board roundtable. Beth, you are first.
A little speechless, sorry. Thank you, Dr. Bremet, for shedding some light on that and providing some much-needed clarity. And I just, I'm not sure how to gather my thoughts yet to respond to that. But I did want to just take time to, to thank those not, not returning with us. Paul and Robert and Steve and Cindy and Emily. I, I've learned so much from all of you. I've learned about how the Board of Education works. Certainly the budget process. In fact, the budget process was so exciting this past year that it just put me right into labor. So thank you for that special treat. I think that we have really collaborated creatively on so many things. And I think there have been times where we've not all totally agreed, but I think we've listened to each other and shown respect for one another. And I just, I so appreciate that. And I think that as a board, it's so important that we do that and set the precedent and set the model for our kids. I think being on the board has, has shown me truly how much you all care about the children in this town and their futures. So I just, I, I thank you for this chance to be able to work with all of you. You will be so sorely missed. And please keep in touch and, you know, continue to do what you do. And thank you for everything.
Thank you, Beth. Emily.
Yeah, I told Cindy earlier that I wasn't going to be emotional, but I have already cried once. So this meeting kind of snuck up on me because I feel like I've been at this for a really long time. And I'm sad to be leaving, I have to say. It has been a huge honor to be on this board. I care very deeply about public education. I care very deeply about our community and our students. And, and I, I am proud of the work that we have done. And I'm grateful for all of the wonderful people that I have met and gotten to know through the process. I feel good about our board members who are staying. I know that Mike and Jess and Beth and Bruce will do a wonderful job with the incoming board. You guys will be great leaders. I'm really happy about that. But it is hard, you know, for, for a, a, a job that requires so much emotionally and time. And the pay is really terrible. It's hard to say goodbye to it. It's not something, you know, I, I, I think it's a great experience and I encourage other people to get involved because it's, that's what makes this work is having people willing to get involved. And, you know, at the beginning, it seems overwhelming, but slowly but surely, you get to figure out how things work. And it's, it's really exciting to be able to influence change and, and see positive outcomes. And so I think the thing that I'll miss the most is being able to celebrate kids and students and their accomplishments. And whether it's student of the month or the art show, the plays, athletic contests, like music productions, like all of it. It's their student council inaugurations, the end of the year. It's their student council inaugurations, the end of the year, graduation. I, it's, it's so exciting, such an exciting piece to be able to be a part of. And it's, has a very special place in my heart. And I'm very grateful for this experience. So thank you all and, that, that's all I got for now.
Thank you, Emily. Ms. Dan?
It's not fair. Don't go after Emily. So I started thinking about this after the last meeting because Emily and I were like, we're like afterwards, we're like, was that our last meeting? Because we were like, I'm like, oh no, we have one more. And, um, and then last night I had the, um, the Kellogg PTO. And then that's when I started thinking, oh no, tomorrow's it. And I chose not to run because it's been a long time. And it is time-consuming and it is emotional. And it is, it's a passion I have for education. I've always been in education for my entire career and just always embraced it. But the, the couple of things that come to mind is, I to, I am honored that the parents and the students and the people in the town put their trust in me and all of us who've been on the board. They actually trusted us to make the major decisions in the educational process. And I think as, as a group, we did a great job. And I thoroughly enjoyed collaborating with everybody. And like Jessica said, we might not always agree. Actually Beth said it too, but we, we did respect each other and we understood where each other came from, as frustrating as it could be at times. I respected everyone for that. Yeah, I just really enjoyed working with you all. I will miss this, but I know I will enjoy my, my time too. Actually, my husband just told me this evening, just before we started, that I'm actually going to Germany in November. Like, I'm like, what? So yeah, I have stuff to do, you know, kind of thing. But like Emily, I do encourage people to get involved, even though I've been in education all my life and at all levels. I, you know, I substitute taught when I, you know, and then I became a teacher and then became, you know, a department chair. And I went up, you know, when I was at central office. And then I came here and I learned so much more, not just about the educational process and the Board of Education process, but because I was put on town committees, I learned about town process and town protocols. So my, my knowledge base is huge now. So now I'm passionate not just about the education, but about the whole town, whole structure in itself. And that's a great eye-opener for me because I was someone who didn't always pay attention to those things. So it just brought a new, new level in my life. I have a hard time closing chapters in my life. I get sad, but I know I'm going to appreciate what I learned with all you. And I'm going to appreciate my time and I wish you all well. And Maureen, I wish you the best in all your endeavors as the leader of our educational process here in town. Thank you all.
Thank you, Cindy. Ms. Silia?
Thank you, Paul. Well, so here comes the old grumpy guy after two very, very warm and emotional comments, Cindy and Emily. I must say to all of you, I have truly been blessed that you guys put up with my ass as much as I argued, as much as I pleaded, as much as I was an obtuse barrier in order to try to get conversation going. And you, as Cindy said, showed unbelievable restraint and respect to each of us. And I knew in my heart that all of us were here for the children. And that's what was my one, one solid piece of foundation that made me feel good about working with y'all. Paul, I want to extend my deepest appreciation to you. You put up with a lot of my bullshit, a lot, pardon my language. But you put up a lot with me trying to influence outcomes and decisions and be an argumentative, and you handled it with the utmost grace. And I couldn't ask for a better chair.
Thank you.
Dr. Brummett, my name is malcontent. And I'm probably going to be eating up a few of your three-minute spells in the future under public participation, only because I want to share my perspective. Not that you guys will accept it, but at least you will know what others are thinking. And I think it's important as you deliberate and come to the decisions that you will render in the future. I know whoever ends up being elected to take our places will be warmly embraced by the ones that are left. Michael, Jessica, Bruce, and who did I forget? Beth. Oh, that's right. Long story here, but guys, thank you for the journey. Thank you for the ride. I truly enjoyed working with you and working against you. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Dr. Fletcher?
Thank you. Though my comments may be brief, they don't express the depth of the feeling that I have. Because I really appreciate what you guys have done. You made a big sacrifice for this community. You've laid it on the line. You've put up with a lot of negativity. You've been through the fire. And you've proven yourselves to be faithful. And yes, there were times that we disagreed on things and we wouldn't be human if we didn't. But I do know one thing that I have admired the most is the fact that we have always put the best for our children and our community ahead of our own feelings. We've always been able to lay those down. The five of you, it's been a very, very wonderful thing, meeting you and working with you. I am going to miss you. So I wish you the best.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. Michael Brandon?
Okay, so since Dr. Fletcher didn't take a lot of time, I'm going to take his time plus mine. Really quick, just to Dr. Brummett, I think anyone who actually spends their time in Newington knows how hard you work, not only for our students and our teachers, but also for the taxpayers. So at, quite honestly, as I was watching that meeting last night, I, I was disgusted by the accusations. And I'm very thankful that you took those few minutes to set the record straight. And I just hope that those who considered or did actually share what happened last night on social media, I hope that they now consider sharing the rest of the story because I think that that is really important for people to understand the true story of how the high school roof in particular, that process, how that went down. I know as Dr. Brummett said, that there, there actually will be a time to celebrate you all. And you all deserve that. But as we know, time does whatever it wants. So you just never know when you get to say some of the things that you want to say. So I'm just going to do it now and hope for the best later on. So Bob, my first memory of you at the Board of Ed was sitting next to you at my first meeting, knowing nothing about being a Board of Ed member. But in particular, the little things that we do at meetings. And we don't do a lot of them on the Google Meet because, you know, we don't get our folders from Deb and we don't get all that stuff. But I remember you leaned over at the first meeting and you told me what to do with the folder so that Deb doesn't get mad at you because you didn't turn in your folder. And I'll always be grateful, Bob, to you leaning in, helping me throughout, you know, my first year especially, giving me those tips and, and really so that I didn't have to ask. I think that that's really important. So thank you for extending that helping hand and, and spreading kindness in the best way that you could. I appreciate that. To Steve, we will never see eye to eye on almost everything. But despite our disagreements, I feel like you made me a better Board of Ed member. And I may not be the type of Board of Ed member that you'd like me to be. But regardless, I'm thankful for your efforts. To Paul, no matter what happens on November 2nd, I'm very confident that people are going to show up to vote and they're going to be disappointed when they don't see your name on the ballot. You've given your life to this town and to this school district. And you had to chair this group during a global pandemic. Like, let's just, let's just take a pause on that for a second. There will be nobody that will truly understand how challenging that was. But I think you did it pretty well and, and you looked like you did it with some ease. And I will tell you, Paul, as we're doing all the campaign stuff and we're talking to people, I can tell you, but I probably can't put a proper value on this, this town respects you so much. And you deserve to know that. And there are, it's, it's challenging to, to be able to share that with you. You know, a lot of people don't know how to access you, even though I would say you're pretty accessible. So I just want to share that, that the common denominator of everybody talking about you is how much they respect you, how much of an impact you had on their kids' lives as you were teaching in the, in the district. So, you know, I, I want you to know that. And I want you to understand that I am very thankful for everything that you've done for the students in this district because anybody who's gotten to know you knows that they are your passion. And it showed every night at these meetings. So whoever gets to earn that chair spot and follows in your footsteps in November, they've got big shoes to fill. And I just wanted to make sure that I thank you for everything that you've done, for being a mentor to so many board members throughout your time here. And I, I just wanted to be sure that I said thank you to you.
Thank you, Michael.
To Emily and Cindy, I'm going to group you together because I don't think I could like do one and then talk about the next one. So really quick, not really quick. I consider myself lucky because I got to learn from people like Paul and Josh. But I didn't just get to learn from you both. I, I got to learn while I sat in awe of the work that you did. Cindy, you're always the first to bring logic and a level head to a conversation. And your experience and respect for educators was always so clear in every aspect of the work that you did on this board. You were on so many committees that I am so happy that you're going to get to take these trips and do all this stuff with Chip because you deserve it. And I know I've told you that. But you, you deserve that time with your family. And you were just always the first one to take that deep dive into every topic that we were covering and to say, well, hold on a second. You know, you need to understand it from this viewpoint. You know, a lot of times from our educators. And that was a perspective that a lot of us never got to have. And, and you were so valuable in helping us understand that. And, and just giving us not only the administrative perspective, but of course, the educator perspective. And you're just obviously a lifetime educator like Paul. And, and you deserve this retirement. And I'm so happy for you and Chip and that you're going to get to spend this time together without having to think, oh, wait, there's a meeting that I have to call into. Because even though you're going out to Germany, if you were on the board, I kind of have a feeling you might consider trying to find a phone to, to call into the meeting. So I'm just so thankful for everything you've done, everything you've taught me as a board member, everything that you've shared with every board that you've been a part on. Just all of your hard work and your dedication to this town is, is just something I, I truly admire and I'm, I'm just so thankful for. And then Emily, you're the most passionate parent I've ever met. Just point blank, you just are. And I say that because it's never just about your kid. It's about everybody's kids. And anybody who's watched you at graduation knows that's, that's your moment. That's, I mean, you are in your zone at that point. And you know that I love standing next to you at graduation because I love hearing the conversations you're having with these students who are, you know, taking the next step in life. And, and you just, you put everything into the student experience in this district. You are such a fierce advocate for our students. And that is something I'm going to miss, sitting at these board tables if I'm lucky enough to, to be here again. But you also have a great ability to just analyze and question things in such a respectful manner and see things that maybe others missed. And, and I think you really did a great job at helping all of the boards that you were a part on kind of question things a little bit deeper than what was on the surface in the original memos. And that's something that, you know, you're always the one who like, I always remember you take off those glasses and you're like, hang on a minute. That's like the Emily guy on like quote, like, hang on a minute, I've got a question. But if you ever had a doubt, Emily, about your value and how much you've helped this town, I want you to remember that every time a student in our middle school seeks out a social worker, that you did that. You raised your hand and you changed those kids' lives. And that is something that years from now, when you're not on the Board of Ed, I hope that you think of that because there are a lot of votes. There's a lot of things, but that's your moment. And that's a moment I'll never forget. And I hope that you're just so proud of that moment because I was proud to be sitting at the table and watching you do it because I remember you thought, should I, should I? And then you did it. And that moment changed kids' lives. It changed this town forever. And, and yeah, I just hope that you're really proud of that. And just all of you, this town owes you a debt of gratitude for all you've done, all you've been willing to do. And just in this moment, I, I can't speak to you as a Board of Ed member. I'll just speak to you as a parent. I just thank you all for everything that you've done. And I hope that the members that are on this board are all elected and we can all follow in your footsteps and make you proud. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael. Ms. Weaver?
Oh, Brandon with the mic drop there. Don't know how to really follow that. So I will, I will keep mine short for everyone's sake because we know how long these go. I feel like I'm like Mrs. Lucas earlier, like I just don't know what to do right now. It's a, it's a, the quote of Winnie the Pooh of having, it's nice to have something that makes saying goodbye so hard. That's kind of how I feel about this board. I've always said we're like a dysfunctional family. And I truly mean that because we bicker, we, we, we disagree and we work together. And we all know it's because we love this town, this school system and these kids. And I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you as a youngster coming into this and all of us not necessarily knowing what, what to expect. You all not only embraced me, but inspired me and taught me so much. It is truly an honor and a privilege to be on this board. And I thank you all for taking me seriously. And thank you for taking every one of us seriously in terms of how we came to this board with our perspective and with our earnest efforts and our earnest honesty to make sure that we do what is right for our students. And I, I want to say thank you to every one of you that, that won't be coming back. It's very hard to, to get into Mr. Brandon's specifics because there are so many stories to tell. And I'm grateful because I'll have these memories forever. And I just want to say a, a quick shout out to, to Mr. Vasella as well because you've led us through this. And on Google Beats nonetheless, okay, this is not, you know, the days of typewriters and the clear, like the clear writing that we all had that we could write with things and it would just, you know, now we have to type in a chat. I recognize how difficult that is. And I'm just really grateful to every one of us for adapting and for riding this wave. I don't know what I expected in these two years. The global pandemic was not in the works. And I appreciate you all leading us through this and leading our children through this because it doesn't go unnoticed. And I know it doesn't just go unnoticed by our board. So thank you. I'll have many more sentiments and many more tears to come. But all I can say is thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Okay, I don't see any other hands up. I'm sorry?
Yes.
Oh. Bob, I take?
The, you and I came into the board about the same time, Paul. We've been through four different, or three, you, three, and myself, four different chairmen. I think you've done a great job running the meetings. I wish all the board members that are staying the best of luck. We brought our board through rough times. We've also accomplished an awful lot and that includes preschool, the, um, moving graduations, stuff like that from the pandemic. I will miss this board. I had a lot of good times. I've had a few times that I left the board meeting upset, but at the, can, everything can't go your way. The, uh, to clarify something that was said earlier from the superintendent on the roof, I received a phone call from, about the roof going out for bid at the high school in which I gave it my okay because the superintendent was out on health leave and a meeting could not be done right away. And they needed to get a quote in to fall in line to get extra money or something for it. So, I gave the approval of Paul, go ahead and send over a quote or have a quote made up. The, uh, I've enjoyed the meetings. I'm gonna miss the meetings. I'm gonna miss Steve with some of his comments. Uh, I appreciate everybody that helped me. Um, as you know, I'm a very computer illiterate person. I live at the end of the line. I lose my computer website quite a bit. So, like tonight, to get onto this meeting, I was late trying to get it back in, but the, couldn't get on the internet until they opened it up. So, the, uh, Paul, I wish you the best of luck. Steve, same for you, all the board members. And, uh, see you all. Expect, expect a phone call from me maybe on the, the, uh, call-in list. And I will see you all at the party. Have a good evening, everybody, and thank you very much for your friendship and wish everybody the best of luck in the upcoming elections.
Thank you, Rob. And I can't end the meeting without a special thanks to, uh, of course, to Dr. Brummett and to her administrative team, to Steve Freecy, to Wendy Kraus, Lou Giacomo, it's into Debbie Craig for all the work she's done with the keeping me legal. Um, and a few times, and I appreciate it to everybody. And with that, I will entertain-
One moment, one moment, please. I forgot somebody.
Go, go ahead, Bob.
Uh, I'd like to say to the board, I think you also must give a round of applause for our secretary, for the Board of Education, in Dr. Brummett's personal secretary. She keeps this board together. Sophie? So, Sophie, thank you very much for all that you've done for me. Thank you, Paul.
Okay, now that motion's out there, who wants it?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Brandon and Ms. Guyon, there we go. Ladies and gentlemen, stay safe, God bless.
Woo, good night, everybody.
Night.